Public Works Meeting for Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. Circuit by Call order at 6:30 PM. A roll call.
Alderperson Akers?
Present.
Alderperson Bailey?
Present.
Alderperson Collins?
Present.
John Rivera is excused. Mr. Graeber?
Present.
All right, well, thank you. Item number three, approval of the January 24th, 2023 meeting minutes. Need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll abstain. I was not there.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Any citizen commentary we're gonna?
Anyone have citizen commentary or is everyone here for the here? Public hearing? Public hearing, okay.
Okay, great. All right, and we'll go to item number five on our agenda. Public hearing for the reconstruction of 88th, 89th, 90th, and 91st Street and 91st Place and Waterford Avenue and the levying of special assessments under Section 660703, Wisconsin statutes upon property for municipal purposes.
Okay, before we start, so this is a hearing about the assessments for the road. So you'll have the opportunity to go to the microphone if you so choose and leave a comment. So we're not answering questions, it's comments. If you have questions, you can contact the engineering office. If anybody wants to know what their approximate assessment is going to be after the hearing is over, Craig on the end here will be able to answer your question out in the hallway for that. Also, we're going to, before the hearing starts, we're just gonna go run through like the top questions that people have about the projects, just to probably answer any question you might have or maybe one you didn't think of. And if you want to speak, please fill out a slip and put it in the in the box up there. If you just want to leave a con or leave a for or against, you can do the same. And I'm gonna come down and collect those slips before we get started.
So I would like to explain the project a little bit more in detail and perhaps answer any questions that you may have that you that you that you may be thinking about. This project is a full reconstruction of the streets in the neighborhood. That means removing the existing asphalt and the gravel base that's underneath that asphalt. The new street will be asphalt and will have curb and gutter. There will be storm sewer improvements in this along the streets. There is some existing storm sewer that's out there underneath the roadway. A lot of that will be reused. We will just be modifying that as needed to improve the drainage. There will be no major work done to the water main that's in the neighborhood. We will be relocating several hydrants in the in the neighborhood. We will not be doing any work to the sanitary sewer. That is the sewer that carries your wastewater from your house, such as your toilets and drains. We investigated that piping and it was all in good condition. We will be adding streetlights to the neighborhood. Currently, there are four We Energies lights in the neighborhood that will be removed and we will be installing streetlights out our own by Greenfield. Those lights will be located on Waterford Avenue at the intersections with the numbered streets as well as the dead ends of all of the numbered streets. Each driveway will be replaced for a certain amount. This is because the new road will have a slightly different elevation and we need to make a smooth transition from your current driveway to the new roadway. So each driveway replacement will be a little bit different. The amount that will be replaced will be different. However, each driveway will have a concrete apron immediately next to the roadway. That's a a concrete, a piece of concrete right next to the curb and gutter. And then beyond that section, we will replace your driveway with whatever material you have currently. So if you have a concrete driveway, we will replace that with concrete. If you have an asphalt driveway, we will put back asphalt. Any lawn areas disturbed during this construction will be restored with topsoil, seed, fertilizer, and erosion matting. Previously, at a public involvement meeting, we proposed combining the public Waterford Avenue with the private Waterford Square. Based on comments and feedback from that public involvement meeting, we are keeping those two streets separate. They will not be combined during this project.
And the objection of the Alderman of the district.
That's correct, Bruce. As a result, this roadway on Waterford Avenue will be slightly narrower than a typical neighborhood street. This is because the right of way that we have there is narrower than normal. For example, Waterford Avenue will be 26 feet wide. Our typical neighborhood street is 30 feet wide. And so on Waterford Avenue, we will be posting that as no parking along the stretch of Waterford Avenue. We opened bids for this project tomorrow from contractors, so we don't yet have a construction start. Once we know that construction start, you will be receiving a letter from the city several weeks in advance of that start. We expect construction to last approximately three to four months. All of the work this year will be complete except for the final layer of asphalt. So the new asphalt roadway will have two layers, a bottom layer and a top layer. We'll install the bottom layer this year and however, next spring, we will pave the final two inches. This will be done in approximately May or June. During construction, Greenfield will install temporary mailboxes for your property in a group somewhere outside of the construction zone. All of this information will be in the letter that we sent you prior to construction. We don't yet know where that spot will be, but it will be very close to your neighborhood. Mailboxes will need to be relocated as part of this project and that will be the property owner's responsibility to do that. During construction, all the streets will be gravel for most of the project, but you will have access to your property for the majority of your majority of the project. There will be a time for approximately three weeks, estimated to be three weeks, that you will not be able to actually drive into your driveway. This is because of the concrete curb and gutter and the concrete driveway apron. That takes time to cure and gain strength before you can drive on it. So during this time, you will be able to park on the street in front of your property overnight and you will be notified in advance of this work. And lastly, We Energies will be replacing their gas main in advance of this project. We've been coordinating with them and have approved their plans for this work. This work may begin rather soon, in the next several weeks. Greenfield, we are not actively onsite managing their work, their replacement work. However, if you have any concerns, please reach out to our engineering department and we'll be in contact with them to resolve any issues that you may have. I believe that I hope that answers any questions about the construction. And again, you will receive another letter prior to construction with a lot more information as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to give you an overall view of things. The city has a budget, of course, like anybody else, like a family budget, and we try to stay within that budget. Nobody likes their taxes raised and we have a tight budget. But over the years, the we've been putting aside money in the road construction projects. And years ago, a hearing like this would there'd be, you know, 100 people here because they almost had to pay almost 100% of that road construction project. What the city has done, the foresight before I was elected, they started putting money into a road construction budget. So the city, we're estimating the city tax taxes, the whole city will be paying about 80% of this project. So the homeowner, you're gonna be paying somewhere between 12% and 15% of the cost of that project. The city engineers, they go around the city and we get complaints about the roads and things like that. So there's a five-year plan of what the streets are the worst in the in the city and we try to have good roads. That's one of our, years ago, I've been in Greenfield a long time and years ago, people would make a joke about about Greenfield roads. So you're, everybody's fighting for those construction dollars. Your subdivision was lucky to get this project. Your twin subdivision to the south, on the other side of the electric company right of way to Cold Spring Road, 88th, 89th, and that is probably scheduled for next year or the year after.
Year after.
Right.
Right. So we have the money. At one point in time, the mayor told me this project might not go through because we might not have the money, but budget, we we ended up having the money for this project to go ahead. So let's just give you some oversight. We had a big public involvement meeting on October 25th with the charts and everything. So everybody got to see how that worked. The city engineer got together with the project people and they thought maybe it'd be a good idea to to put Waterford Avenue because we could widen it if we used the right of way from the apartments. And they could put their, they like, the city engineers like to do the 30-feet roadway. That's standard. This, because it was goofy back, way back when your houses were built, that right of way is off off-center and the the 30-foot, so if we combined their driveway to the apartments to the north, we could make a nice big one roadway. But of course, then you'd have traffic coming in off of 92nd on Waterford and they would either come and go to the apartments on the left to the north or to your subdivisions, your streets, 89th, whatever, on the south. And we decided that that wasn't going to be a good idea. We'll keep the traffic in your subdivision
Separate.
and not not deal with the people from the from Briarwick. So that gives you a little insight. Go ahead.
Yeah, and there'll be no parking on Waterford. So the apartment complex won't be parking on Waterford. Okay, so we have four people registered today. One of them, excuse me if I make if I don't say the names well. So Lauren Broszroski, 40, 15, 91st Place, registered both in favor of and against. So apparently, some things they like and some they don't. And Rose Pietrowski, registered, is not speaking and registered against.
Okay. Is that Rose?
She wants to speak.
Rose would like to speak.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you would like to speak? Okay, come up to.
Come on up to the microphone and just say your name for the record and your address. Everything we do, yeah, every 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 city meeting, we have minutes and we have somebody that takes all the minutes and so you have to say your name.
Pull the microphone down.
Yeah, your name and your address.
Rose Petricuski, 40, 12, South 91st Place, Waterford Street. Okay. Are you going to be taking five feet off of my front property and five feet off of the people across the street from me?
So at the hearing, you you just you tell us what you like and you don't like. You can make a statement. It's really not a question, a question and answer. But just to just to help to help move this along, we are not taking five feet. The city owns 30 feet, I'm sorry, 60 feet, no, 50 feet of property in the middle between the homes and our road is going to be fitting on the middle 30. Now, it's the road is going to be slightly wider than it was before, but that's because we're having, we're adding those that curb and gutter for drainage. So it's really not, I don't really think it's five feet. It's a little less than five feet.
Usually.
But it provides places, it not only does it provide the road, but it provides area for parking and that sort of thing, so.
You can't just repair the road and.
No, because we need to improve the drainage as well, which you need to make it, add the curb and gutter.
And you're gonna put trees and lights up? Both trees and lights?
There will be lights and there will be lights and there will possibly be trees in the future.
Well, you don't live in this neighborhood. It's been over, a lot of people been there for over 25 years and to have all these curbs put in all of a sudden, we need that too?
Yeah, curbs are necessary. When we upgrade a subdivision like that, you, I think the vast majority of the people in that district, when that gets done, people are gonna love the curbs. People are gonna, it's more orderly, it's good for the drainage and for for our our stormwater, right?
And our roads.
It's in our in our roads. It's a it's an absolute upgrade. And we've, I had one other subdivision about five, six years ago in my district. Some people complained about the curbs and gutters and now they love them. So progress and curbs and gutters.
That remains to be seen.
Oh, you'll like it.
You think so?
I think so.
I've been there over 25 years and a lot of these people have been here.
A lot of people don't like change, but you'll like this change, I believe.
Well, you don't live in our neighborhood.
You know what? That did happen to our neighborhood and this is quite a few years ago, though. I live in a cul-de-sac and it looks like, I always say, it looks like a little happy face. It's a circle subdivision. And I remember when we went through that and with the stone on the streets and everything and why are we getting curbs? You know, now we're gonna have to pay more for this and, you know? Didn't, did not like that, right? Because I'm gonna have to pay for this. And I was, when we were doing it, you know, we were paying for everything. It was kind of nice. We did get the driveway done and we got it done with a deal. But and I know they had the cement going up and everything. We really were against it and quite a few of the neighbors were. Now we've had it for like, it's been like this for years. I would say in my area, at least 15, if not even longer, maybe 20. The streets look great and it is really nice with that curb. I'll tell you, I, it was worth it. It really was worth it.
Well, I can even say, I live across from Conco Park. In our neighborhood subdivision, we had people that would park in front of their houses. They put gravel in front of their houses. It looked really, really dumpy when it was like that. Now we have curb and gutters and it has, I think, elevated the the subdivision a lot by having the curb and gutters. I think it it adds to your resale value to have curbs instead of people parking on front lawns and stuff like that. And that happens a lot over the city. There's a lot of areas, even like here, across from us, the subdivision, that doesn't have gutters. I can't tell you how many complaints I get from people about neighbors parking cars on their lawns and they're nice neighborhoods, too, but the curb and gutters do stop that stuff. My mother couldn't wait to get gutters. She loves them. They've helped with flooding in her house, having the added benefits. And I mean, we had actually residents from that neighborhood come in and thank City Hall when they they paid their assessments. And we do, I think, also have payments, plans for the assessment fees and stuff like that, that you can pay it over time because we understand it's tough. But every place we've put them in, people have noticed a huge improvement in their neighborhood having them there. I understand, nobody wants to pay, I get it, but it it's also saves our roads, so we don't have to repair them as often by having the the cement curb and gutters in them. It definitely.
And we have to pay toward toward these repairs, is that right?
You'll be assessed a fee, yes.
I mean, I just paid my taxes, now I have to pay over $2,000 to have this done?
I don't know how, what the fee is.
It is probably gonna be in that area, yeah.
Where am I gonna get $2,000?
Right.
I'm, I live on social security in this.
Right.
And I just paid my taxes, so where do I, how do I pay this bill?
Like I explained before, the, it used to be a harder, our, the homeowner used to have to pay a bigger assessment for the roads in front of your house. And now the city's got it down to about 12%, where it used to be a lot, lot higher.
After the hearing, after the hearing, Craig will be in the hallway and he can talk with you a little more about the assessment process.
I'll look at your assessment.
Yeah, I'd like to know where I'm gonna get this extra money from.
And answer questions, so.
I live, as I said, I live on a fixed budget and I mean, my money just doesn't come from come from the sky and I'd like to know how I'm gonna pay this. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Okay, speaking, speaking against is Scott Mulson?
Mulch.
Mulch.
I'd also like to change, I was against combining of Waterford Avenue, so I just.
Coming to the mic.
Yeah, so state your name, state your name and your address and just, and you can.
Name is Scott Mulch, 40, 21, South 91st Place. So I just said I'm against the combining of Waterford and that with the apartments. We, my wife and I bought, purchased a place, you know, we just bought it last year, so we haven't been in there that long. So, you know, it sucks having to pay an assessment, but understand, I do appreciate the gutters. Other people may not and I respect that as well. But like I said, I'll withdraw mine from being against for four. So I just did not want the apartments being combined with there due to the added traffic and safety issues with our kids playing in the neighborhood and all the other neighborhood kids.
We will have, it will not be connected and will even have no parking on that street, so.
Right, that's a nice subdivision you guys live in. It's a nice area.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And finally, Judith Gresgorski?
Gresgorski.
Speaking in favor?
Judith Gresgorski, 40, 63, South 90th Street. I'm 100% for the curb because my sump pump has not quit running since the storm, so thank you. The other thing is, we're glad that the lights are going on, especially with the new walkway and the electric company field and there's so many people walking that that area is very dark without a light being at that end of our streets. The only question we have is, some of our rain gutters are connected to the sewer system. Are they gonna have to be removed or changed or will they still be hooked up?
They will not be affected. They will, they will remain connected.
And the drains in the actual lawn, will they be raised? Will they be level? Because right now they're sunken down pretty far. Will they be raised or not sure?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't, I can't speak on that without looking at the specific plans in in front of your property.
Okay.
You can contact us at the engineering department. We'll definitely be able to answer that for you.
And during construction, will there be access for ambulances and for individuals who really cannot walk? We've got like three or four neighbors that cannot walk and they need access. How will that work?
To answer your first question, yes. Emergency services, our fire department, police department are notified in advance of this project as well and they've, they've, they are given updates throughout the project. So at no time will they be restricted from accessing your neighborhood. As far as accessibility, as I mentioned, you will be able to access your driveway at all times except for a relatively shorter amount of time. And during that time, we will work with any individuals that need special accommodations.
Great, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against? Would anyone else like to speak for or against?
You sound like the mayor there. You have tasks twice.
Yeah, okay, you can close the public, I guess.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Akers, seconded by Collins to close the public hearing.
Oh, wait.
I didn't hear.
We don't, we don't. But you can look at, we could, if you contact the engineering office, you can see some, we can refer you to some neighborhoods that we completed recently, so you can kind of see what it looks like after.
Can I just add one thing, Craig? When you go out there and talk, can you maybe talk to the lady that just spoke and maybe if you could tell him some of the people that you know do have problems? So we could even make sure that they reach out? Okay? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Craig.
Yeah, so if you have any other questions, like I say, Craig and our, the staff up in engineering, they're on the second floor. And I, I just want to say that, you know, City Hall is open Monday through Friday, you know, eight to four. And I'll tell you, all our departments, we work on this, we we ask our department heads and engineering department to be open to the public. Anybody, if I heard anything different, I I would be shocked and I would try to remedy the situation, so the other Aldermen here, too. So what I'm saying is, if you have any questions, there's nothing stopping you to come in and, come in, you know, during normal business hours, go up on the second floor and these guys are there. I've known them to be very accommodating
Very.
to the people of their, our, our city. And if you got any questions about them and projects, they'll answer it. If they don't answer it, if you have problems with them, if they're rude to you or something, you can call me. That's what people do, they call me with their complaints and hopefully, I got very, very few complaints about our people. We have good staff here. If you have, during COVID, people were coming into the health department, walking in, asking questions. If you have a question on your tax bill, the treasurer's department, the city clerk's office, problems with, you know, absentee voting or whatever. But I mean, I tell you, our staff is super here and we're open and I don't know why more people, you know, don't come in and, you know, sit down with some of our staff because they're, they're absolutely willing to do that, right, guys?
Yeah.
And they, and they do. And there are people that use the, use, you know, use our services more than other people. But I think this project is needed. It's gonna be good for your property values.
Right.
It's gonna look nice.
Right.
It's gonna help with the water drainage and anybody that, most everybody that has this done likes, likes the project, likes the way it's gonna work out. Hopefully, the weather cooperate, the last project we had, the weather was bad and they put them like three, four weeks, a month behind schedule. Looking to hopefully be done by October. It could be November depending on the weather. It's weather dependent. So some people are calling me saying, hey, Bailey, you know, you said you're gonna be done by October and now it's November and then you're not done.
Don't call us about the bridge, though, in Loomis.
Yeah.
Bridge on Loomis is, is, is it closed now?
No, no.
Not yet.
I'm assuming March, right?
Right, right.
The bridge on Loomis will be closed soon.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm not looking forward to that process. I'm looking forward to the end results and not to the process of it, though.
So everyone is welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting or we'll just take a short break if anybody wants to leave. Craig will be in the hallway if you want to know.
And thank you for coming and giving us your opinions. We really do appreciate it.
If you want to know specifically what your assessment is, Craig can help you out.
We had a motion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 And go into a break.
Opposed, motion's carried. We'll take a two-minute recess.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was very good.
Oh, yeah, I was over by your place. Yeah. Yes, yes, we did.
And how long have you lived in the neighborhood, did you say? How long have you lived there? How long?
25.
25, awesome. I know, I've been in my house since 69. My, I bought, my husband and I bought it from my mom, so, but yeah. And I know, you know, with going through that, because I remember, it's like, why do we have to have this? I was very angry. And we have to pay more.
It's gonna be disruptive, but we'll get through it.
It's worth it. And, you know, like Cars did, when you said that, Cars going on the laws sometimes, parking.
Oh, it's annoying.
Yeah. Especially by the park.
You got a lake in the backyard?
Ooh.
Yeah, that's my, my house.
Hopefully, some of this will take care of that, hopefully, right?
Yeah, I hope so.
That's the main reason for curb and gutter like that, for, for water.
I think it creates step, like, you know, like a, a step. She gets two feet over here and three feet there, so it's the engineering of it. When they, the subdivision, when it was designed.
Bad.
They're looking, yeah, it's, because, and it goes almost all the way.
When your subdivision went in, I tell you, we looked at the plans, and, and even that Waterford Avenue, the right-of-way is not, the road is not centered on the right-of-way. It's, it's, it's toward the houses. And we would never allow some of those houses to be so close to the street now.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah, what they got, what they need, where they has four cars in their driveway, and two of the cars are not gonna be a big park there.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be hard for her.
Well, that's down the, down the road, but there's some that have that road in.
On Ninety-first Place?
On Ninety-first Place, she has like four cars parked in her driveway. And two of the cars she won't be parked, you know, the garage.
That's the park on the street?
They'll have to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
At Shirley Crest.
Because I have a hard time walking a long distance to get there, even getting out from my car to my house sometimes.
Well, they'll have to make a Batman exit.
Most people, like, when they did Shirley Crest, they had the mailboxes on Layton Avenue kind of in front of my house. People just. Yeah, people just would pull up and grab their mail and go in, but, yeah.
But they were, while we're doing the construction, we can't park in front of our house.
No, no, they said you can, you can.
It would be a park right in front of us, so.
Yes.
Because it would be hard for me, too, if I can walk.
Yeah, you'll have access most of the time, but then they'll, but when you don't, you should be able to park in front of the house.
Yeah, until like, either like you said, concrete or asphalt.
That's when you can't get in your drive.
Now, if I've got, if I've got asphalt on the back end of my drive, or my front's concrete, is that gonna be asphalt there, or is it still gonna be, it's gonna be concrete?
It's gonna match whatever they cut in.
Okay, so I'm sure somebody said that blacktop is blacktop, it's gonna be full of concrete.
No, they'll match what you have.
It's about maybe five feet of blacktop.
They'll match whatever they connect to.
What time said they matched the concrete?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, is the whole thing gonna be concrete? You know, that whole.
The road, no.
Be all concrete, be asphalt.
It'll be asphalt, and the curb and gutter and that, and the approachments will be.
I live in Grafton, Oaxaca County, and they refitted the whole road. And it actually, instead of going down, because there was on the river, Grafton, and they actually like pitched, they're able to pitch it that opposed. The other way, there's no homes. This is the big subdivision.
I used to live in Cedarburg.
You do, yeah. You do wonders.
Yeah, if it's engineered right, if it's done right.
If it's done right, yeah. They grabbed it out, pitched it, and it goes, you know, when you're looking at it, it's not so bad. But you, when you see the rain and snow, it goes off to the side.
Yeah.
I was, I was forward to it, to have it done, and they, you know, they did it, so.
I wish the city would have engineered Layton.
You wish the city would.
Engineered Layton, made it do it right.
All right, thanks for showing up.
Yes, thank you very much.
Has any questions?
Okay.
On it, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll start again.
Number six.
Number six. Adopt a final resolution to levy special assessments under Section 660703 Wisconsin statute of property for municipal purposes for the reconstruction of 88th, 89th, 90th, and 91st Streets and 91st Place and Waterford Avenue.
Should we just say it's 704, so whoever's taking the minutes knows that it's, we started at 704? We'll make a, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I will second.
Seconded by Collins. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Number seven, approve a modification to an existing sanitary sewer easement agreement between the City of Greenfield and We Energies.
So, we have a sewer easement with We Energies, and there's one num, there was one small change that needs to be made to it. It has to do with pipe size. So, it's nothing of significance. It's just, We Energies would like us to make that small change.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification.
Motion by Acres.
I'll second it.
Mr. Graber, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, motion's carried. Number eight, approve a cost-sharing memo of understanding with the City of Milwaukee for a street improvement project on Wanda Avenue.
So, over in Shirley's district, Wanda Avenue, it's mostly in Milwaukee, but you know how our crazy borders are. There's like a little bit that's in Greenfield. There's a, in the packet, you can kind of see.
There's a lot in Wanda, because my mom lives around.
Yeah, this is farther to the east than her.
I figured that. Past like Honey Creek or something?
Yeah, yep. So, it's like, so Milwaukee's doing a project, and they called us up, and they said, hey, you know, as long as we're doing our part, can we, should we do yours? And we said, sure, because we've been doing that a lot lately, working with Milwaukee, so, yeah. So, it saves us money in the long run, because we don't have to do a whole big project for a tiny little street, so.
Fantastic. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Collins. Seconded by Graber. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I was just, so the 55,000 just comes out of the tax revenue I take, or is that that construction fund we were talking about?
It comes out of bonded money.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Prove, number nine, approve a contract for the project number 2223, 68th Street Concrete Replacement with lawn contracts in the amount of $541,693.52.
We're replacing the concrete on 68th Street, right near City Hall, between Cold Spring and Forest Home.
And we're gonna have some limited access, right, because of the cement, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, there's gonna be.
So, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be concrete. It's concrete now, and it's gonna be concrete later. But there's plenty of, plenty of parking for the residents there.
I know that, that's something that can we coordinate with the police department, too, to be more diligent in those areas while those homeowners are not able to park.
I, I didn't quite hear you, Pam.
Those residents will be unable to park in their garages or in their driveways for an extended period of time because of being concrete, so they'll have to park elsewhere.
Okay.
So, I would like the police to have a bigger presence over there.
Good idea.
While their.
Good idea.
Vehicles are not able to be parked in their site.
So, during construction, we'll coordinate with the police department.
Very good idea.
And have we worked with this contractor before, a little bit of background on?
Yes, we have.
Okay, I need a motion to approve that contract for 68th Street.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Graber made a motion.
I will second it.
Ms. Acres seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion's carried. Number 10, approve a contract for the project 2222. Two, two oh two.
Room two two two.
One more two, wait. Two, 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 two.
For the 2023 asphalt resurfacing. I probably didn't write that very well, so.
Yes.
For, yeah, asphalt resurfacing in an amount of $655,425.48.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Collins, seconded.
I'll second.
And Mr. Graber, although, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion's carried.
Fantastic.
Number 11, approve a contract for the project 2221, Concrete Street Improvements, Howard to.
I'm sorry, how, wait, how, it's spelled, not the Howard two, it's Howard Avenue.
Howard Avenue, to, what 100th Black is in?
Between 92nd and 90.
Generally, generally 92nd Street and 99th Street, in addition to the intersection with the 104th Street.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve, as presented.
Motion by Collins.
I'll second.
Seconded by Graber. Any discussion? All those say, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion's carried. Number 12, approve a contract for the project 2225, Whitnall School, Forest Planting.
All right.
Larson Landscaping, in the amount of $59,550. That's all, oh, yeah, that's one of the high, the bids. All those were bids that we're talking about.
Is this some of the grant funding?
Yes, we got grant.
Awesome.
Grant funding from the MMSD to plant trees in the Whitnall School Forest.
Great job, and I would love to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Collins. Seconded by Graber. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
100% aye.
Motion's carried. That's great that.
That is.
Uh, we're planting on all those trees, and that was brought up on the tree commission. Our city foresters talked about that, that project, and, yeah.
And are we gonna try and get trees, trees in this neighborhood, too? I mean, we usually do do trees, I thought, with.
Yeah, it would usually be, it wouldn't be this year. It could be next year or the following.
All right.
So.
And we have no supervisor of public works to this evening.
Number 13, Superintendent of Public Works Report.
So, John is excused, so we won't have a Superintendent of Public Works Report.
We've been keeping them busy, aren't we?
Today, yes, we have.
And they stop being so busy, and, you know, go back the way it was?
Voting in the streets, and, yeah.
Number 14, Engineering Report.
All right, for tonight's engineering report.
Got anything on Loomis?
I won't have too many, too many updates, because we just awarded a bunch of contracts. But a quick update on the Honey Creek project. Our contractors still out there in the winter working.
He was nice to work with.
So, Honey Creek Project's going well. We're about halfway through. They're working through the winter as best they can. They actually prefer colder weather, because everything gets frozen up a little better for their equipment. So, they've been slowed down a little bit in the winter, but still making good progress. Just as a reminder to anyone that may be listening, please stay out of that construction zone, even though it is a park. Please don't jump any orange fences to get in that construction zone.
Have they blocked off, is it the entire creek that's currently blocked off? Are they doing portions as they move down the creek to work on the restoration, or?
They, they are moving in phases.
Okay.
Currently, they're on more towards the east end of the project.
The Loomis side of it, right?
Correct, yes. So, to give an update on some of our remaining projects that weren't awarded tonight, even though we had the public hearing for the reconstruction project, we don't have a bid opening for that yet. That will be tomorrow. So, tomorrow, we'll know more who our contractor may be. We will also open a bid soon for a sanitary sewer project throughout the city. That's gonna re, rehab some sanitary sewers by lining inside of the pipe, as well as doing a couple of spot repair locations that we'll actually be digging down to the pipe to replace.
For those contracts, are they gonna, are we gonna bring it back to Public Works to approve, or are they going right to council?
So, the Waterford Avenue project, we had a hearing for tonight. That'll go right to next council.
Okay. Yeah, because I was, I was figuring you'll get the bids in be.
We missed it by a day.
Yeah.
So, all of our, all of our projects, we don't currently have start dates for them yet. I know a lot of residents always want to know specifically when they're starting. We give our contractor flexibility to start.
But they don't give them flexibility once they've started, right?
Exactly, exactly, Pam. We give them flexibility on when to start, but they, in their agreement with us, they have to finish within a certain amount of time that we think is sufficient. So, we've noticed that we get more, more contractors interested in these types of projects, because they can fit it into their schedule throughout the construction season. For all of our projects, once we know a construction start from our contractor, we do send out letters to all property owners several weeks in advance. A detailed letter with a lot of information. And then quickly, just an update on some other agency projects. Milwaukee Water Works is replacing their water main on Botzford Avenue and 72nd Street here, close to City Hall. We still don't know their schedule for that work, but they have indicated that it might be in May or June. And lastly, the big one for, for the city is the DOT Loomis Road Bridge Project and the Freeway Resurfacing Project. They have opened their bids. They have selected a contractor, but we still don't know when their start date will exactly be.
Do we know when their end date will be?
Through, through, through November. So, I, from, from our, all the indications that they've given us, they, I believe they're still looking to start sometime in late March.
You'll let us know, though, when the start date.
Of cour, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
We, City of Greenfield, we get.
Prepare us before we start getting the calls.
We get, we get, yeah, correct. We get.
Open the bridge again.
Yeah.
Those last 60.
So, City of Greenfield, we get invited to their pre-construction meeting with their contractor. We, we are included in their prog, weekly progress meetings, so we are kept up to date on the project.
Have we, do we know any progress on our pleas and requests on sound barriers? Is that moving anywhere, or are we still?
I have not heard anything. I know that the mayor is working diligently on that.
Yeah, as well as Senator Bradley and State Rep Donovan. They're, all three of them are really working hard on that.
And if there's anything we can do.
Yes, anything.
Lead, you know, big, you know, whatever.
Even if I can do anything, please let me know.
Sure.
I'll drive her there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that officially.
Thank you.
Concludes the engineering report.
Excellent, excellent report. Thank you very much. Okay, 15 other topics for future agendas, I think?
Sound barriers.
All right. Item 16, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion.
Mr. Graber said.
I will second.
Ms. Collins seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion, that's, we are adjourned at 7:15, 7:17.
Okay, raise your hand if anybody knew what my reference to Room 222 was besides TV shows.
Oh, a TV show. Room 222. I don't remember the show.